Meeting of the Board of Education of Delmar Heights School District will be conducted in person following all current health regulations in effect. Timing meeting. Item 1.1 is called to order open session. Open session of the November 17th, 2021 Governing Board of Trustees Meeting is called to order at 4:45 PM. Item 1.2, public input concerning items on the closed session agenda. We will now call members of the public who have requested to address the Governing Board regarding items that are on the closed session agenda. Is there any public input concerning items on the agenda?
I have one here. It's asking.
Okay, I am calling at hearing of DMUSD student. Is it ready? Yep, I'll be ready.
Okay. On page one of the annual report, Holly McClure states, when the story is written about the 2020-21 school year, ours will be a positive story of how many people came together to do the right thing for kids. Holly, when you vindictively single out a child, exclude them and isolate them in the hallway or some other lonely place on campus, that is not the right thing to do for kids. And when you deny them of their right to an education and blatantly violate a court order directing you to include them into the agenda classroom, that is not doing the right thing for kids. It is shocking, it is abusive, and is a violation of the laws. 2020-21 was not a positive story. It was a horrific story of hidden abuse that you authorized and directed your staff to subject our most vulnerable students to. Here's a sample of what I, as DMUSD parent, had to listen to almost every single day at pickup. I've been on campus only two times this school year after hours. Both times I've felt safe, unsafe, and stalked and harassed by district staff. Holly, in fact, was right there yesterday. Both ADA and 504 prohibit retaliation against persons with disabilities and people who advocate for students and file a complaint with OCR. The district is a covered, the district is a covered public entity under the ADA. The district is also covered by the Rehabilitation Act because it receives federal financial assistance. FERPA is a federal law that is administered by the Student Privacy Policy Office in the U.S. Department of Education. FERPA applies to all schools that receive funding under any program administered by the department. DMUSD receives funding under the department. If a complaint is filed and the district is found in violation of student confidentiality laws, eligibility to receive funding under any applicable program can be terminated. In addition, the federal penalty of suspension of all federal public funding will be suspended. As educators, the district is entrusted with safeguarding the privacy and the rights of children and must take this seriously. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item 1.3 is adjourned into closed session. The board will meet in closed session to discuss, consider the following matters. Item 2.1, conference legal counsel, attending litigation 549-569B. One matter is, as is identified on the agenda, 2.2, conference legal counsel, existing litigation, government code number 549-569A. One matter is identified on the agenda. Two, three, two, four, two, five, and two, six are evaluation of employees as identified on the agenda. Two, seven, conference of legal counsel, pending litigation, government code section 549-569D1. One matter as is identified on the agenda. The board will now adjourn into closed session at 4:51 PM. Thank you for your patience. We are at item 3.1, called to order open session. We are going to recontinue open session at 6:03 PM. By law and board policy, any member, I was notified by you that this meeting is being recorded. By law and board policy, any member of the public may address the board on an item on the agenda or any non-agenda item, but the public must present a written request to the board. Therefore, I ask you to kindly submit your speaker slips at this time to help us run it at the chapeau. Speaker slips for non-agenda items need to be turned in prior to item 4.2, hearing of the public regarding non-agenda items. You will be recognized and called to the podium at that time. You'll have three minutes to address the governing board. For those individuals who wish to comment on a particular agenda item, your speaker slip will need to be turned in by item 5.7, hearing of the public regarding agenda items. You'll be recognized and called to the podium when your requested agenda item comes up. You'll have three minutes to address the governing board. Item 3.2 is report of action taken in closed session. First is a report of action from the 10/27/21 board meeting. The board unanimously approved the settlement in the case of Laurel Zitko versus Delmar Heights School District et al., San Diego Superior Court Case Number 372019CUNPCTL on October 27th, 2021. The district will pay $50,000 in exchange for a full release and dismissal of the lawsuit. A copy of the settlement agreement is available upon request. Item 2.2, in closed session by unanimous vote, the board voted to approve a compromise agreement and release with student in OAH case number 2021060286. The agreement includes special education services and attorney's fees in the amount of $28,000 in exchange for waiver of claims against the district. Items 2.2, 2.4, 2.5, and 2.6. The governing board has determined that the goal progress as required by employment agreements with the superintendent and assistant superintendent attendants has been met. And as specified in the employment agreement, the board approved performance compensation for superintendent Holly McClure and assistant superintendents Kathy Burks, Shelly Peterson, and Ryan Stanley, which is items 2.2, 2.3, 2.4, 2.5, and 2.6 in a 5-0 unanimous vote. Item 3.3 is a pledge of allegiance. Holly, would you please read this?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 3.4 is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve each agenda?
So, second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Close. Okay, the motion to approve the agenda has passed. Item 4.1 is correspondence. Dr. McClure.
Good evening. The superintendent's office has received the following correspondence regarding district business on these topics. DMUSD Health and Safety Plan, Protocols, Guidelines, and Practices, Face Masks in School, Student Recommendations, SDCOE Equity Conference, Student Information, Board Agenda Items, Attachments, and Handouts, Delmar Heights School Rebuild, Wildfire, Future Budget Divisioning Workshops, and Board Meeting Accommodations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item 4.2 is hearing of the public regarding non-agenda items. Is there any?
Yes.
Okay. We will now call members of the public who have requested to address the governing board regarding items that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to address their governing board regarding a non-agenda item must complete and submit a speaker slip at this time. Okay, so first we have Kirk Vertita.
Oh, it's on. Can I just turn it on again?
There you go. Go right ahead.
I have two items. I wanted to know if there were insights into how things might be proceeding with the upcoming COVID mandates, if there was going to be a policy on that. I know that it seems to be officially voluntary with districts and they're making district-wide choices. If there was an affirmative thought for our district as those come down from the government potentially becoming acquired.
Okay, thank you. So we can't respond right now to public comment, but I can refer you to staff and ask them to follow up with you. So I just handed over to Dr. McClure your information and we'll follow up with you on your question. Thank you.
Can I have a second one or no?
Okay, oh, sorry, I guess, please.
Yeah. So my second one is in regard to, we were able to participate in ADL, No Place for Hate Thing. When it first came out, we were a little bit apprehensive about some of the tenants that might come through the ADL. This story has been pretty mainstream, pretty middle of the road. And at the time that we asked about it, our principal didn't have any information at the beginning of last year. She invited us to participate. So as parents, my wife and I were, I think, the only ones that were allowed to participate. And we were in the meetings with the kids, one or two with the teachers, and we thought it went really, really well. It was, it was very much focused on anti-bullying, not some of the more controversial things that, you know, you see spread around that parents are really worried about. So we were pleasantly surprised. We gave that feedback to our principal at the time. But some of the things that we heard in the teacher meeting, if it's all student times, there was 20 or 25 teachers that were on, were, did start to cross into some of the more, well, some of the things that made us a little more uncomfortable, some of the intersectionality things, some of the things that we've all probably seen on TV. And so I, I wanted to get some thoughts on if there was going to be any affirmative statement on that kind of policy. At the same time that we had a really positive experience with the No Place for Hate, we contributed some materials, all the things that they talked about with the kids was right on the book, I thought. It wasn't really anything related to some of the racial stuff. It was really anti-bullying, you know, all of that was really, really good. So, you know, that's sort of my question is where does our district stand on that? And I know there's no, you know, probably no plan for CRP 101 class or anything like that, but, you know, elements of it did bleed into that meeting that we had with the teachers and what they were told.
Okay, thank you. I'll move on. Okay, Laura, Lauren Sherman.
Hi, my name is Lauren Sherman. I am a parent to a sixth grade Ocean Air student and a third grade Sage Canyon student. And we are looking into private schools as possible places for our sixth grader to go next year. And I came into complete shock and disappointment when I heard about the board's new policy regarding not allowing for students to receive recommendations from teachers and administrators. There was no communication regarding this change. It came as a shock to me and to every other parent I've talked to. It was unilaterally, without any consideration regarding the negative effect it would have on our district students. No reason has been given besides that you want to align with the San Agito School District. I don't understand why we can't just have the administrators and teachers write recommendations for the current students that DMUSD has. San Agito has nothing to do with DMUSD. It has no pay-through-stick students. Or even make a universal sheet if it's going to be too much time and effort for teachers to write individual recommendations. I think it would be helpful for students to at least be able to have a universal sheet that says, yes, I think this student would be a good candidate, or no, I don't. This new policy just puts our students at such a disadvantage. Private schools require recommendations as part of the application process. This admissions process is extremely competitive. Some grades only have a 15% admission rate. And to think that students that don't have recommendations from their teachers or their principals are going to be chosen over someone from the Potway School District who has a recommendation is just naive. I mean, the fact that my son can't have the recommendation from Mr. Stanley who's known him for six years is just a disservice to him. I think that parents are going to really consider pulling their students out earlier than sixth grade because a lot of these private schools have middle schools starting in sixth grade and it's going to be easier for them to get in. And it's going to result in lower enrollment and make our district less desirable, which is not what we want. I really think that this new policy has more disadvantages than advantages. I hope the board will reconsider their policy and think of new options and give the students the ability to compete on an equal playing field than other applicants. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to ask Dr. McClure and her staff to follow up with you on that. Okay, everyone is present? We wish to submit a speaker slip. Will be afforded their time. Those who are not present will not be afforded their time to speak. So I have Mary Ann Grossner, but is Mary Ann Grossner present? Okay, then she will move on to our next student. Item 5.1 is board recognition, DMUSD Employees of the Month, November, December, 2021.
Congratulations to these DMUSD Employees of the Month for the months actually of November and December 2021. Dina Erwin, Ashley Falls, Speech Language Pathologist from Carmel Del Mar. Steve Brem, kindergarten teacher. Delmar Heights, Kathy Minerek, STEAM+ Science Specialist. Delmar Hills Academy, Blanca Hernandez Stingle, kindergarten Spanish immersion teacher. Ocean Air, Kathy Minerek. She, oh, she was a double. She was both schools. STEAM+ Science Specialist. Congratulations.
She gets two certificates?
She does, actually, yes. Sage Canyon School, Paris Smalley, STEAM+ Integration Specialist. Sticmore Ridge, Jennifer Fletcher, kindergarten teacher. Tori Hill, Cindy Hestener, sixth grade teacher. Early Childhood Development Center, Nicole Sanders, pre-K lead teacher. And from the district office, Rick Rosser, Technology Support Specialist. Please join me in congratulating these excellent employees.
Okay, 5.2, board report of the Delmar California Teachers Association with President Kevin Kuno.
President Halber, members of the board. I'm Dr. McClure in the cabinet. Thank you very much for having us this evening. Again, I think I said this last time, I'll say it again. These months are going by quickly. It felt like we were here just like a week ago. I do not have anything from DNCTA to report tonight, but however, it is my pleasure to present my vice president, Kate Daniel, and also my hero of the evening. Because as you know, this is conference week and it was a really difficult task to get anybody to really put something together to present tonight. I promised it and Kate came through last minute and put something together with her first graders and science curriculum at Ocean Air. So I'd like to introduce Kate Daniel.
Evening. I just made a little video to show some of the really fun learning that's happening with our Amplify Science Curriculum in first grade, so. We don't get this kind of treat very often these days, but thanks for taking the time to put that together. That was really, really sweet.
My pleasure.
All right. Sorry, Phoebe.
The DMSCF report, always a ton back to follow.
But it's perfect. It's always the perfect segue into DMSCF. Yes, so thank you. They were adorable and what a great lesson, too. So, yeah, good evening, President Halber and members of the board, Dr. McClure and members of the cabinet. It's good to see all of you. We just wanted to start from DMSCF by thanking our incredible community. We have wrapped up our fall campaign and we just wanted to share, which we got to see a little, you know, a little video of right now, of just how, the incredible learning that's happening in our STEAM+ classes right now. And we're just grateful to our STEAM+ teachers and to all of our teachers and to our community for all of their support of STEAM+. And so we do have some pictures just to show of all of our kids getting to engage in all of their different classes. And we're so thrilled to have music back in person this year and all of the great STEAM learning that's happening. So thank you to everybody. And the next slide is just a kind of reminder for this group. We will, we are currently recruiting for DMSCF. We are looking for new candidates for directors for now, but definitely for next year. We do have a number of sixth grader parents on our board who have loved every minute of being on DMSCF, but will, you know, no longer be here next year, myself included. So we want to make sure we have a great board in place. So we are just kind of spreading the word and making sure we have another great board for next year as well. And we are thrilled to announce that we have a sixth grade Legacy Tree Program that's now running district-wide. It was launched at all of our schools this past week. Certain schools already have this in place and it's just a great memento for families to have that have been able to contribute to DMSCF and support STEAM+. And they get to have a, you know, nice leaf that's engraved with their family name or their student's name. And I believe this might be the one that's at Ocean Air, but we have three installed right now and by the end of this year, we'll have them at all of the schools, which I think will be fantastic and a great legacy for all of our sixth graders and all of our families to come to. So we just wanted to share that with all of you. And then just a reminder to save the date, we have our January 20th STEAM+ event coming up, which will be an adult event and it will be in the evening here in this room with the district. And we're really looking forward to having families and parents gather together to talk about our incredible STEAM+ program and the future of the program as well. And then we have our Jogathon dates, so January 30th and February 18th. We'll probably be here before we know it, so. So just a reminder to look forward to those. We can't wait for those principal challenges and all of the funds to be had for our Jogathon. So thank you very much and happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to you. Thank you. 5.4 is a board report from the Delmar Parent Teacher Association. And we have Tori Hill's School PTA President, Mindy Lewis, to provide a report to the board regarding the PTA and giving.
Hi. Good evening, President Halber and members of the board, and Dr. McClure and members of the cabinet. I'm Mindy Lewis. I am the proud president of the Tori Hill's PTA. And tonight I wanted to share a little bit about how our PTAs are giving kind of in the Holy Spirit and some of the different things. Do I do it on my own? Okay, it's been a while for me since I've done the presentation. So the mission of the California PTAs is to positively impact the lives of all children and families. And our PTAs are at schools doing it in so many different ways. And one of the ways is through giving, so I'm going to highlight three of the ways that I see our PTAs giving. One of them is giving their time. I refer to PTAs as an army of volunteers. Anything that you need done on a campus, you can get parents to come and do it and they will come in numbers. They give their time planning and supporting so many community events. Here's a picture from Sticmore Ridge's movie night they got to have last week, which was very well attended and fun. They come and decorate the school, whether it's the first day of school, whether it's promotion, Red Ribbon Week, they're always there. They spend their time fundraising and even get their hands dirty. I know a lot of the parents have taken over the school community garden on the campuses. Another thing they do is give resources, whether it's classroom mini-grants to fund the different needs of the teachers. They've also given their resources for school assemblies. This is a picture, I think it was just from Monday of Sage Canyon's BMX assembly that they got to have on campus. And they support so many of the different programs and clubs on campus. There's a picture from Carmel Del Mar's Red Ribbon Night. I'll be right on that. But another way that PTAs do give is by giving back. And I have been blown away with the way that all eight of our PTAs in this district have made giving such a priority and they have really found different ways to involve the students in giving back to the community as well. So I want to highlight some of the different ways that our schools and PTAs have worked together to give back. So one of them just happened right after Halloween with Operation Gratitude. A lot of the schools were part of this. And Ocean Air alone reported to me that they collected 420 pounds of candy that were then donated to the military. I actually took this picture. I drove 250 pounds of candy myself to Camp Pendleton and handed it off to some very happy Marines. So that was just a really awesome experience because we're excited to give their candy back. Another one is the Giving Thanks Initiative Delmar Hills and Delmar Heights have put together. They have the students create thank you cards and then personally deliver them to different essential workers around the community, which is a really neat thing. And then the Monarch School, Tori Hill's has supported the Monarch School every year. They have the students create hygiene kits for the students at the Monarch School. They put full-size bottles of shampoo, conditioner, and other essential needs. They write uplifting cards and then we combine them to deliver them to the Monarch School. And then also right now, there's a lot of drives going on on the campuses for the Community Resource Center, holiday baskets. Sticmore Ridge just collected 139 coloring books and Sage Canyon is collecting different puzzles and games to go in their holiday baskets. And then the really cool thing that I thought I wanted to share is that a lot of the PTAs have combined different community events they're doing with a giving element. So Delmar Hills and Delmar Heights during their ice cream social at the beginning of the year had a backpack drive where people could bring new or used backpacks to give back them. A lot of the Read-A-Bonds included an element with a used book collection. Ashley Falls just had their booth through or they did a food drive to give non-perishables to the new nonprofit 92130 Cares. There's going to be a family field day with a toy drive. So there's so many exciting things going on on the campuses and our PTAs are going to continue to give and make a positive impact on our community. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Put all those slides together. Okay, we're at 5.5, board reports, governing board members. So we'll start, I have it ordered here, but I think we just start at the end. Kathy, would you want to?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for attending tonight. I was able to complete, I'm really thankful, I was able to complete my final Masters in Governance for the California School Board Association series. It was on community relations and advocacy. Oh, I'm sorry. And I learned so much in this hole. There were five sessions and I learned just a lot about how to be a better school board trustee. And this in particular, this last session ties in well with the other activity I participated in this month, which was the budget workshop, the Visions and Holes workshop for our district. So I'm really excited about all that's to come this school year and in the years ahead with, you know, connecting with community members to make sure that our community is actively engaged in the next steps that our district is taking. So, yeah, it's great.
Well, congratulations. I'm not congratulating the people. So I attended the DMSCF board meeting and I don't have anything to add to what Phoebe had just said. They were working very well on the fundraising. I think you said something about this was the highest amount you've had this early so far in the meeting, so that was, that was nice to, nice to hear. They're doing a great job over there, so I was glad you part of that. Thanks.
And I, along with all of my colleagues, learned a lot about budgets. We had our workshop and kind of a primer, I guess, for those of us that have gone through the Masters in Governance, we kind of understand how We kind of understand how budgets work, but to always have a kind of a primer on that. And I appreciate Mark and Catherine putting that together. It was well put together and informative. Thank you very much. I know I'm looking forward to the California School Boards Association's annual meeting, which is coming up in a couple of weeks. And there's always programs that are, that are helpful for us as we venture through this and enter the duty year. I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And I can't believe I'm wishing everybody a happy Thanksgiving though.
Yeah, I really appreciate all the work that the PTAs are doing out there. It's really nice to see the community being involved. And I was able to go to the Ashley Falls Booth Through and people walk around, see family members and kids. And it was really nice just to see the community alive again. I was also at San Diego County School Boards Association meeting. And we were meeting with the president of CSBA, Susan Harria. She came down just to be able to introduce herself and kind of share some thoughts and how things are going. And it was a good, good opportunity to speak with her. So nothing too earth shattering. That's pretty much it for me. But yeah, happy Thanksgiving, everybody, and we hope you all have a good time. Be with your families and everything. Thank you.
And Corrie, it's so great to have families going back on campuses for these events. It's like, feels like it's been a million years, but it's actually only been a year and a half. So things are looking up. And I also enjoyed the budget workshop and I echo the thanks that Doug offered to Mark and Kathy for all of the work putting that together. It's a great primer for us, but it's also just a great foundation as we go into this next stretch, which will be strategic planning, getting ready for the next three-year strategic plan that our district will put together this spring. Okay, so 5.6 is a board report. Superintendent.
Good evening again, and thank you, Kate, for sharing tonight. It was great. And it's, I mean, I've had the pleasure of being able to see you with your kids in class and everything else going on at your school and throughout the district. And thank you. And it is a busy week. And thank you. And thank you to all of our other teachers for all that you're doing for parent conferences. We really appreciate it. And I know all of our parents appreciate the time that goes into planning and preparing for conferences and making it such a valuable experience for parents to really learn more about their child. So thank you so much. So much goes into that. And Mindy, so much giving and I appreciate all that our PTAs do. And on behalf of everybody, please send back to the PTAs our gratitude for all of the volunteer service that you do and the leadership you ride at all of our, at our schools. It's been a wonderful start to the school year and so much good is going to happen throughout the rest of the school year. So we are focused, as it's been brought up, on continuing our return to normal. And you saw some examples of that already this evening. We are, you know, excited to be able to bring back some of the things that our kids have been missing because although we have been in school, we were in school all last year. We've been in school all this year. We do realize that there are things that our kids have missed out on and things that they're still missing out on. And so to be able to make good decisions and move forward with, with bringing some of those things back is actually doing what's right and best for our children. So we saw a picture of an assembly that happened just this last week. So to be bringing back assemblies and be planning field trips and things that make the whole experience as rich and meaningful as possible for all of our kids is very exciting. So we're thrilled about that. And as we move through the next coming, you know, the next months, we're also anxious and excited to be able to be welcoming back more parents on campus as we, as we move into, hopefully after the holidays. And we know how important that is and what an important part of our culture all of our parents are. So we're excited about that as well. So, and a huge happy Thanksgiving to everybody from all of us. It's been a wonderful start to the school year. We're very proud of everything going on throughout our entire district and appreciate our board's support as well in all of our work. So thank you. And I want to say a big thank you to every staff member who works in this district for doing outstanding work on behalf of our children every day and for caring so much about kids. So thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. And we're at 5.7, hearing of the public regarding agenda items. For anyone who would like to address the governing board on a particular agenda item, your speaker is slip while need to be turned in for this time. And we recognize the call of authority when a request of agenda item comes up. You have three minutes to address the governing board. 5.8, Board Approval Minutes, 3 October 27, 2021, and November 9, 2021, meetings. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Or any pages?
I'll approve the minutes.
It's fine. Sarah's second? Okay, print to Catherine. So Catherine. And all of us in favor?
Aye.
The motion to approve the minutes has passed. Consent agenda. Are there questions on this on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll approve the consent then.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All of us in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? Motion to approve the consent agenda has passed. So here, I have 7.1, Board Report, History, Social Science Framework, Civic Learning Education. And I'll just mention that, you may know that there's a binder in the back of the room. So just like we have a packet of materials here in our binder that we receive, in our folder that we receive when we come into the meeting. There's also a, the same set of materials in the binder in the back of the room that you're welcome to have a look at or let staff know if you'd like a copy. And then also the recording of this meeting together with the visuals in the meeting will be available on our website subsequent to the meeting. So look for that. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sarah, Sarah Ossing, our coordinator of the Delmar Human School District. Thank you.
Good evening, President Halpern and members of the board. It is a pleasure to be with you this evening on behalf of our Instructional Services Department and district staff to share an overview of civic literacy instruction in Delmar Human School District. When working with groups of parents, teachers, and administrators throughout the country, Ron Richart, a senior research associate with Harvard Project Zero and a consultant with our district, will often ask the question, what do we want our children to be like as adults? Interestingly enough, Ron has found that regardless of where this question is asked, the responses are very similar. There is often an emphasis on the attributes that drive learning, like curiosity and questioning, and those that facilitate innovation, like creativity, problem solving, and risk-taking. There's also focus on the skills that are needed to work with others and to manage complexity, such as empathy, collaboration, and critical thinking. These intellectual virtues establish a vision for what equality education can afford and also for what, excuse me, and also paints a picture of what it looks like to be a well-rounded citizen. We value the role that our children play as citizens in our classrooms, schools, and our community. And we work to facilitate opportunities for them to practice the skills and dispositions of citizenship that will grow with them over a lifetime. In 2016, the California History and Social Science Framework was updated to include civic literacy standards. The goal of these standards was to support our students with making connections between historical and modern-day events, developing research skills, and gathering and synthesizing information with the ultimate goal of supporting students with presenting logical arguments based on evidence. These revised standards empower our students to realize their individual and collective impact as citizens within their communities. This year, our STEAM Plus integration specialists are collaborating closely with our grade-level classroom teachers to design meaningful, grade-level-specific units of study that incorporate the design-thinking process with civic standards that are outlined within our California History and Social Science Framework and our roadmap to educating for American democracy. Students engage in experiential civic learning experiences, which allow them to take ownership over their individual, or excuse me, take ownership over identifying community needs and addressing those needs. The themes for our units are inspired by Harvard's Project Zero, their specific project around children are citizens and align with grade-level units of study. And you can see all of our themes for the grade levels. So now let's take a look at what some of these civic learning experiences look like in action for a few of our grade levels. As citizens of Delmar, our second-grade citizens visited Crest Canyon. They made observations about living organisms and their needs. And they are designing ways to keep the canyons and waterways clean to preserve our natural habitats. And they will eventually present their solutions to canyon lands and San Diego groundworks. At another school site, our second graders are working on a two-part project that begins with students learning about their family ancestry and creating a Tree of Need project to depict their individual family stories. The second part of this project will incite a design-thinking challenge to create a Tree of Us, which is a shared representation of the ancestral history of the class and will invite others in the school and the community to participate in the project by sharing their story. After learning about traditional Kumai culture, our third-grade citizens of San Diego interviewed a current member of Kumai Nation, Ms. Roscoe, and learned more, and learned more about what is important to the modern-day Kumai. Our students are designing and creating statues, boobies, and creating native plant gardens to honor the Kumai and present back to Ms. Roscoe. Through civic learning experiences, our students become change-makers, practicing the skills and dispositions of citizenship that will last a lifetime. We look forward to you visiting our classrooms throughout the school year and seeing our civic learning interaction. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for me? I can certainly answer them.
Can I have a quick bit of your presentation?
Sure.
So I see that you're, these are at different sites. Are we able to utilize these lessons at all the sites?
Yes, that is one of the things we're putting together, our integration specialists. We have a STEAM Plus internal hub that shares all of these experiences commonly so that they can really incorporate some of these meaningful experiences working with industry experts and the thinking behind some of these projects with each other.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can't wait to get in the classrooms one of these days and see that in action. See some debates and things like that a little bit in the past years. So hopefully we'll get to see that again soon. Okay, 7.2 is a student report, Social Media and Student Wellbeing, by Debbie Hutt, Director of Student Services.
Good evening. Thank you. It is my pleasure to be here to talk to you and present this tonight about this very important topic of social media and the impact that it has had on our students and their wellbeing. And I think that we are all recognized that there has been an increase in dependence on electronics and technology over the past decade. But certainly as a result of the pandemic, we've seen really even a more exponential increase in dependence on social media platforms as a means to connect virtually with others. And recently, we've learned the impact more. There's been more data and more information come out publicly about the impact that that reliance on social media and the isolation of the pandemic has been, has had on our collective wellbeing and certainly on our students and our families and our community. So we will be talking, I'll be sharing with you tonight some of the data around mental health in general and how that data really has informed our development of priority actions for our district. What are we doing around this topic to really raise awareness and support our families on understanding the critical value of human connection and our next steps in bringing this awareness to our district? So it's important that we consider the mental health data when we are talking about our priority actions for the district around this very important topic. Prior to 2012, research has shown that geriatrics were the loneliest demographic of citizens in North America. Since 2012, that demographic, that research has shown that the demographic has shifted. And it's actually young people aged 16 to 24 that have been rated the loneliest demographic. So research shows that people with more online friends or online-only friends report on social media, report a higher degree of loneliness. So this isolation of the pandemic and the increased dependence on digital platforms have only exacerbated this problem. So like I said, it's really important that we're considering the mental health, the data around mental health and the impact that it's had on our young people. This past October 2021, the American Academy of Pediatrics and the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, as well as the Children's Hospital Association, announced that the mental health of our children has become a national emergency. And they're citing the serious toll that the pandemic has played on top of existing challenges. So it's important for us to think about if social media is really a way for us to connect to one another. Why are we seeing these statistics? Why are we seeing a rise in the reports of the number of higher rates of depression and anxiety and even isolation and disconnection, even though the social media platforms are being used as a means for people to connect? So what does this mean for us as a district? We really look at this data and it has informed us in our development of these priority actions. And we're really basing this around our core beliefs of the importance of human connection. So one of our priority actions is analyze the impact on students living in an increasingly present virtual world. Explore the importance of human-to-human connection and the value of caring and concern for others as human beings who have feelings and needs. And the other priority action, develop a systemic approach to support students in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade in understanding the role of social media in their lives. And these priority actions, they are based on some of the data that we've received, but they also really speak to our core values as a district and our core beliefs of the importance of human connection and human relationships. And this also is in alignment with really what was driving our emphasis to be back to school last year and to keep our schools open, is really understanding the importance of this human connection for our students and their families and our community as a whole. So what are we doing here in DMUSD to support this work? We have been holding ongoing conversations with our leadership team around really raising awareness to this topic, the importance of our human connection within our community, but also raising awareness of the impact that this reliance on social media has had on our students and helping guide conversations around how to support our students and families as they navigate this digital world and experience. So we recognize the increase and role that our school counselors continue to have on supporting our students, their wellbeing, their mental health wellbeing, and also their social emotional development through the Second Step curriculum, through the lessons that are provided in the classroom by our teachers, our lessons provided through common sense media that address the topic of digital citizenship. And then also our parent speaker series, which this year will be focused around this topic of social media and the impact that it has on our students and also helping maintain the wellbeing of our students. So our next steps, we will, in December, will be screening a film. It's an independent documentary called Upstanders. It is a very powerful film. We have watched, we've had a screening of it ourselves and it's very powerful. It sends a very valuable message on social media. They talk somewhat about how it impacts, the scientific impact that it has on, on anyone who uses it as far as what drives us to continue to seek the feedback through social media. And it is a powerful message of building resiliency in our students. And we are engaging staff and school communities And we are engaging staff and school communities to raise awareness around this topic. So we will be organizing screenings at each school site to really allow school communities to come together and engage in these conversations, to raise awareness on this topic, but also to provide support for our families as they guide children through this digital world that they have been born into. And then in February, we have a speaker, Julia Storm. She will be presenting on the topic of helping parents raise self-safe, conscious, and healthy kids in the digital age. And that will be a district event. She will be here one evening in February. And then we will continue preparing and planning to bring this topic directly to our students as part of our priority action through student assemblies in the spring. So this is the poster for the Upstanders film. And like I said, it is a documentary about the power of connection and talks quite a bit about social media and the impact. And these are the dates and the times that we will be showing the film at each school site. We're sending out a postcard to parents so they will have information directly around when the film will be shown at their school site. And we're encouraging all parents to attend at their school to really engage in conversation around the importance of this topic, not only to our students, but really to us as a society and recognizing the role that the district plays in supporting this need for our students and our families and really bringing it back to the power of the connection, the human connection, and the value of that.
Thank you for being so proactive on this important topic. I really appreciate that. And I'm looking forward to seeing the film, so thank you. It's excellent. Questions or comments?
I just wanted to say thanks. Thanks for this. It's really important, especially what's happened over the last couple of years in the social-emotional and social media, all of that together. So I know we're going to be having a review on this. I'd like to see more money. I may have that block grant we're going to talk about later, but I'd like to see more go into this type of education for teachers and the staff.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, Jane. Thank you for your presentation. I think that's my, those scouts' comments. I think this is an important asset to focus on. I did have one question. I noticed there's a supporting fourth, fifth, and sixth grade students. I was wondering, is there a reason why you picked up starting at fourth grade in regards to social media? Is why it doesn't go younger? Because I've seen kids starting, whether it's games, whether it's whatever, they're interacting with other people earlier than being in fourth grade.
And those are the grade levels that we have focused on for the priority action. But as we are planning for our student assemblies in the spring, we will be considering conversations with our younger students as well. So I do believe that we are seeing an increase in social media use with younger and younger students. And so like I said, for our student assemblies, we will be addressing some of those topics. And also our classroom activities provided by Common Sense Media through the digital citizenship, those are provided on all of our grade levels.
Just to follow up, what is the digital citizenship taught? Is it lessons in digital class?
Yes, and it is scaled and directed towards the developmental age of the classroom. So depending on the grade level, it is around topics of digital safety, a digital footprint, just those topics throughout the year.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. 8.1 is Board Review of Educator Effectiveness Block Grant Expenditure Plan. That's Shelley Pearson. This is the Superintendent of Instruction Services.
Good evening. So this block grant provides one-time funding to be used on professional learning, to promote educator equity, quality, and effectiveness. This grant can be expended over a five-year period, beginning with the 21, 22 school year and concluding with the 25, 26 school year. And I believe you all have the expenditure plan in front of you. So it's presented this evening with hopes that it will be approved at the December 4 meeting.
I had some questions. Is it possible to, I know you've got a lot in the last year, so I don't really like to, I like to be able to spend it earlier and save the money. You never know how the budget's going to, can we pull some of it earlier or not?
We can. We could spend it, concentrate it in next year, the following year.
Because I think stuff we're already doing, so it's just a matter of what letter we're pulling the money out of. So we can say, we got it, let's pull the money out of it as soon as what I would like to see. I'd also like to, as Jenny's talked, more money going into some of the social-emotional, more money going into, you know, educational standards like the Skills That Matter Most by Ron Richard, those types of skills and training. That's where I'd like to see it, as opposed to some of the other programs that are in there. But really focus on educational learning, getting students at the highest level they can get, and social-emotional, mental health issues. So that's where I'd really like to see it.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any questions? This is just a report. It sounds like we're going to be, we're going to have this next thing. 8.2 is Board Review to Hold the 2021 Organizational Meeting After Governing Board Transcends, December 15. This is an action item. So let's see. I don't really read anything about that. Is there a motion to approve the date for the 2021 organizational meeting? I think everything will be set for December 15.
I'll be able to approve the date, so.
All those are here?
Aye, aye.
None. So the meeting date has been set for December 15. 8.3 is Board Review, First Reading of the Proposed 2022 Governing Board Transcends Meeting Dates Elimination, Dr. McLeary.
Good evening. This is the first reading of the proposed meeting dates for the 2022 calendar year, and you can find them attached to this item. Approved review, and it will come back next month for approval.
8.4 is Board Report, Universal Transitional Kindergarten and Community Funded Districts, Dr. McLeary and Superintendent and Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent, Mrs. Services.
Good evening. This evening, Dr. McLeary and I will be presenting on universal transitional kindergarten and community-funded school districts. In this presentation, we'll be looking at legislation as well as what would universal transitional kindergarten cost in DMUSD and what are the actions that DMUSD is taking. So 8130, which was the education budget trailer bill, had the implementation of a universal transitional kindergarten, which would create a 14th grade level. In addition, community-funded school districts, including Delmar, do not receive an apportionment for TK. This may look familiar to you. This is what was presented at the Budget Workshop. And what is the cost for a universal transitional kindergarten for Delmar? I'm making the assumptions that we would have approximately 500 students with 20 students to two adults, looking at possibly, you know, one adult being a certificated teacher, the other adult a classified substitute cost, materials and supplies. We're looking at a cost of approximately $4.7 million. Some of the items that we haven't quantified yet is the curriculum for TK, STEAM Plus, professional learning, universal meals, and also facilities and equipment. The cost for reconfiguration of classrooms to include bathrooms, classroom furniture, lunch tables, playground equipment, technology for the classroom, for the teacher, for the student, and related software. And also the analysis of capacity at school sites and whether modular buildings would need to be included. We know that our goal is to remove the relocatable classrooms and convert to permanent buildings. We also know that currently we're looking at $800 a square foot for new construction. And the size, the average size of a TK class is about 1,250 square feet. So that's about $1 million per classroom. So it is a considerable cost to build additional classrooms for a TK program. But also, we know that we have some shifting and changing going on in our district as we are removing approximately 20 relocatable classrooms and building 20 classrooms in Pacific Heights Ranch. We have that shift going on there.
So transitional kindergarten is a... Transitional kindergarten is something that we're doing a great deal of advocacy around right now because it has, as Kathy was saying, been a result of the legislation, which is why it is being offered at districts in the state of California who do receive apportionments. So for those districts, they are receiving funding per student for those children attending transitional kindergarten. We are not eligible to receive funding, and we do not receive funding for transitional kindergartens. So we are communicating and advocating with our state legislators. We're meeting individually with each legislator, as well as working as a collective with other community-funded districts, the superintendents and staff from those districts to advocate for funding for all students to be able to attend transitional kindergarten in the state of California at an adequate level. That includes not just the aid funding, but also funding for facilities. Because as you heard Kathy just share, there's a significant cost to facilities, and we do not have the facilities to add transitional kindergarten at this time. A second very important piece about transitional kindergarten and why we're doing such heavy advocacy is because offering such a program would be an insurmountable financial burden on the K6 community-funded district. If you think about that, a 14th grade, we currently have K through 12, so adding on a 14th grade in our situation would be absorbed solely by our elementary school district. So we would take on that entire financial burden, and a district of middle school and high school districts such as San Diego would feel none of that burden. So it is insurmountable when you think about the cost and what it would take to implement a transitional kindergarten program absent of adequate funding. It would be a huge increase in staffing. And I will say, because adding that program, we would need to add the teachers that Kathy was talking about, as well as the aides that Kathy was talking about. That is a huge cost to the district. I've already talked about facilities and the fact that we don't have those facilities. So when we look at what would happen, adding TK students into our current funding would reduce resources and eliminate programs or priorities that we currently have for our K6 students. When we talk about huge increase in staffing for TK, there would need to be a decrease in staffing somewhere else. So that decrease in staffing would come from somewhere like a dramatic change and elimination of certain programs such as STEAM Plus or class size. So that is why it is so important to us that we're advocating for funding for all districts, including all students, including those students who attend school in a community-funded district. Right now, we do not receive funding for TK, which is why we don't offer TK. It is related to apportionment, and we do not receive funding, and we're not eligible to receive funding now or in the future without a change in legislation. And the funding and the advocacy is happening now. We are having meetings and having those conversations and communicating with our California legislators now.
Thank you for this presentation. And it's an important issue that every parent, community member should care about in this district and any other community-funded district. And so it's definitely important to advocate for the funding from the state to the extent this is mandated. And just wanted to ask if there are ways that we could let the community know they can help in this advocacy effort with the state?
Yes, as we move forward and we are working collectively with, as I was saying, other community-funded districts, we'll have a specific way for community members to reach out to our legislators. We're doing that now so as to raise awareness and advocate for our legislators to actually create a funding mechanism for us, and we will communicate that to our parents as well and community members as well.
Thanks, Holly. One thing, I know they came out in the Budget Workshop that we had, and the playground equipment, those that we have playground equipment. But ours is rated for five to seven-year-olds, and you would need four to six or something like that, is what my understanding. So you have to replace or add playground equipment. You know, the classrooms, well, we do have spare classrooms, but they don't have bathrooms. They're not the right size. So things like that, that would drastically impact our ability to run a TK program. We would have to put some construction into classrooms, add bathrooms, add playground facilities. And in addition to all the lunch tables and classroom furniture and all that stuff that would go along with it. So it is a big capital-intensive program to bring it in, as well as the loss of whatever programs. Because we would have hard decisions aboard as to where to find or pull the funding from. Because we don't get any more money if the state does not change this. We would not get any more money towards a TK program. It has to come from somewhere. And that would mean it has to come from K6 programs that we currently have. So as Holly said, small class sizes, STEAM Plus programs, oral language program, things like that that we really want. So please, we need advocacy from the parents really, intellectually. Because they need to fund this if they're going to mandate it, so.
I know we touched on this in the Budget Workshop we had a few weeks ago. But could we get more concrete numbers as to the amount of classrooms we currently have that have bathrooms to accommodate TK students and one sites and that? So we know how many classrooms we need to retrofit with bathrooms if that's possible or build new classrooms if that's also required.
Yes, we're working on that. Yes. Thank you.
And then, just to be clear, it's a certificated teacher along with a classified aide.
That's correct.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Thank you. You'll keep us posted and let us know what we can do and let the community know.
Yes, we will.
That'll be supportive.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. 9.1 is Board Report, Facility Update. This is all on D2. Second round for a couple of programs.
Good evening. Good evening. Governing Board, Superintendent McLeary, and members of the cabinet. Here today to give our monthly facilities update. And this month, we will cover Delmar Hills Academy Modernization, the Pacific Heights School built, and Delmar Heights School rebuilt. The Delmar Hills Academy Modernization, as you know, we've affected our three community planning sessions. And at this point, we are continuing to do some work on our exterior options and our classroom layouts. The architectural and the engineers at my office have been doing the more in-depth structural analysis, looking at things like the exterior panels and do we need to replace, do we need to... to, where can we put in windows, things like that that will help us to come to some full understanding and what we actually can do to add light into those classrooms and to make some of those adjustments. So we anticipate having the information needed to come back and do a more in-depth report to the board next month and bring our architecture line office. So our plan would be to come back and have a little more information on the exterior options we're looking at, classroom layouts, and go into a little more detail. With Pacific Sky School, we, I presented to the Carmel Valley Planning Board just after the board, actually the day after last month's board meeting, and the planning board did approve our request for stop signs in crosswalks. Appreciate Board Member Mock for being there and speaking in favor. We are now working with the Carmel Valley Planning Board and Councilmember Locava's office. There's sort of a step planning board that they put through to the city, and then Councilmember Locava's office, Ricky Playhy, with his office, was at that meeting and has asked a couple of questions, so they're taking the interest. So we'll be moving forward. We know this view, which the city sometimes works, so we're going to be pushing on it now so we can hopefully have those installed prior to the school opening in August. And we continue ongoing construction. We are, continue to make great progress with our anticipated start date in August and full completion in January, and we're hoping that we can move that full completion up a little bit earlier so that our kitchen gets done a little bit earlier, our after-school programs, and I think we'll be absolutely able to beat that date at this point. When we look at the site now, we're all the way down to roofing and more closer to the admin building. This is the, the front of the school, the kindergarten, which is getting close. We're looking at the masonry, which is all that block being done, probably substantially done in about three weeks. So really amazing. You'll see a lot of, we've got the electrical and data and power, all that stuff is pretty much wrapped in, and we now actually have a parking lot. So a nice thing for the community as well, because a lot of the, we've got a lot of people on that site. We have over 100 people at that site some days, and being able to bring a lot of that parking off of the street. City work has been done, so it's kind of been able to move a little bit off the streets, a little less impact to the community too, which is nice. Great progress we've made, so. And then with Delmar High School rebuild, we had unanimous approval from the Planning Commission. That approval was appealed by Prokopion on behalf of State of Field, and so the appeal then leads to moving to city council. So city council will adhere, make a final determination. We are working diligently with the city staff. We are, unfortunately, the city staff has to update a report and submit that report, so we're working on getting that so they can get that in as quickly as possible so we can hopefully get that city council hearing next month. As soon as we're aware of a city council hearing date, we will be sharing that, obviously, with the Planning Commission date, and upon receipt of the permits, we'll update the construction timelines so we can move forward with the construction of that project. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Okay, item 12.1 is board review, reminder of upcoming DMUSD events. And 12.2, celebrity access for the December regular board meeting. Are there any items? Okay, then we're at 12.3, adjournment of the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's done. Thank you. All in favor? Aye. As opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening.